Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Board Meeting for the City of Bangor. My name is Reese Perkins. I am the Chairman of the Board. I'll introduce all the board members up here with me this evening. On my far right is Vice Chair Ted Brush, Don Maher, Ken Hume. My immediate left Jonathan Boucher and beyond Jonathan is Trish Hayes. Beyond Trish is Community and Economic Development Director Anne Krieg. Behind me is City Solicitor Dave Sebcek. And on his right is Planning Analyst Anya Colette. The sound and video is provided by Communications Coordinator Cody Vigu and his crew. We thank all these folks for their help with this meeting and leading up to this meeting. The Planning Board has multiple roles. First, we review amendments to the Land Development Code, which typically includes either changes to zoning districts or changes to text within the code. That's all we have this evening. So there's quite a lot of that. Our review of these amendments includes adherence to the most recently amended Comprehensive Plan and is in the form of a recommendation to the City Council as to whether the item ought to pass or ought not to pass. The City Council makes the final decision on zoning and land development code changes. Second, we serve as the regulatory authority for land development permits, commonly known as site plan review. There are none of those this evening, so I'm not going to talk about those much anymore. The Land Development Code can be found on the city's website. As far as approaching the meeting, when the applicant or members of the audience are asked to speak, they should come up to this podium up here in the front, introduce themselves, let us know where you're from and address the board and the staff. When speaking, please make sure to speak up. We all have microphones, but they're for online zooming. They're not for overhead loudspeaking, so please speak up if you will. We'll try and make sure everyone gets heard. Also verify there's a green microphone button up there next to the microphone. That should be on it all the time, and that just gets you onto Zoom. If you are on Zoom and you'd like to speak this evening, please use the raised hand function on Zoom. I see quite a lot of you on Zoom, so that's good. Let us know you'd like to speak, and we will bring you into the meeting. We do broadcast these meetings to streaming services. All comments and discussions should remain respectful and considerate of all others. Any attempts to disrupt this meeting by disrespecting the views and opinions of others may result in persons being removed from the meeting. As a last resort, we will end this meeting if it cannot continue in an orderly or considerate manner. They allowed me to gavel this evening, which is the first time, so I'll bang the gavel if I have to this evening. We'll see how that all goes. We will call the applicants in the order they appear on the agenda. For today's meeting, we will consider the land development zone changes first. Those of you that are here for the short-term rental, be aware that we have four other items in front of that, so that will be later on in the meeting. Hopefully not too long. We'll try and get through the rest of those items as quickly as possible. When it is time for you to present your project, we ask that the applicant or their representative would come forward to the podium and present the application. Once you have made your presentation, the applicant should stay at the podium while we take comments from the staff and questions for board members. At that time, the applicant may be seated, and we will open the floor to public comments. So when I say public comments, that's when folks can get up and speak their mind. For the short-term rental item on the agenda, we are going to use a timer, a three-minute timer on that because because we've had a couple of meetings already. In regard to that, we've had a ton of emails and phone calls and so forth. So I would encourage you, if you come up, to please get right to your point. Let us know how you feel, and we will be sure to take that into consideration. The board, after hearing all of those things, will deliberate on the proposal using the standards found in the Land Development Code and state statute as applicable, and then we will act on the proposal. The board may continue the application to a future meeting in order for the applicant to modify the plan or for any other reasonable cause. Once a project has been reviewed, feel free to leave the meeting if you don't care about the rest of the agenda. If you would like to stay, you are certainly welcome to listen to other project reviews. We thank all the applicants for taking the time to present their projects. We certainly thank the public for coming and speaking. This process is important for the city's development and direction of our future. So with that being said, the agenda this evening, item number one, and just a reminder to board members, these are ought to pass, ought not to pass items. Zone change to amend the land development code by changing a parcel of land located at seven forty-three and seven fifty-nine Broadway, map lots R forty-one zero one nine B and R forty-one zero one eight from contract shopping and personal services district to only shopping and personal services district by removing the contract conditions. Said area of land contains approximately one point five eight acres total. The applicant and the owner is John Tozer and Laura Reedy. I would like to make a note to board members that items one and two on the agenda are similar. The properties are adjacent to each other, and so you may hear a lot in reference to both of those items, even though we're speaking about the first item first. So with that, if the applicant would come forward and present their project. Yes. Okay. Okay. You speak into the microphone?
Both of these folks are my dentists. These, they're married, but they're both dentists. And I don't think it's a conflict myself, but if anybody else does, then I'd be happy to stand out. You can have a discussion about whether you think there's a special financial interest, but if if no one feels that that's the case, then we don't even need to have a vote. Yeah, sure. Yeah, that would be good.
I just wanted to be sure we didn't need something.
Yep, thank you. So does the applicant have any comment on this? So concerned with that?
No.
Okay, thank you. I certainly don't. Does anyone feel differently? Board members, let's just take a vote. All in favor of a member of Hume staying on the board for this item. Raise your hand. None opposed? They're all set. Thank you. Yep. So, carry on.
Good evening. My name is Fred Marshall with Plymouth Engineering, representing Dr. Tozier and Fanbro on two zone changes which are related because they're budding and they were created out of approximately sixteen years ago, contract zone in two thousand and seven. So if with the permission of the board, I kind of like to go, I kind, I would like to go over how we got from then, two thousand and five, two thousand and seven to today because it impacts the reason for requesting all both sets of parcels of removing the contract zone and rather than repeating it for both and delaying you more or spending more time. If that's acceptable, I would like to go ahead and do that.
Sure, please, please do. Yep.
Thank you. As Mr. Chair mentioned, it's, we're pushing for a map amendment to remove the contract zone restrictions to standard shopping and personal service without contract. As I mentioned previously, there are two properties go back to about two thousand and five when Varnbro purchased what is now, you may remember, is seven twenty-nine, seven twenty- Broadway, which was formerly People's Heritage Bank. And it was a mobile home park part. It was, I think it was zone multifamily, high-density residential, I should say. And in the process of going through, looking at development potential, that is, excuse me, desire was there were several lots, merged them into one and pursuing a commercial zoning to allow development of the bank specifically at first. And in the process of Dr. Tozier had a had a curb cut that basically lined up not quite with Hassan Avenue. And there were about two years of, I guess I would politely say, negotiations between the two parties to come up with some solution, and there was discussion with the city. And in a nutshell, what was decided is agreed upon, I should really say, was create a four-way intersection. The city engineer at the time, Jim Ring, was very adamant about doing that. And ultimately, there'd be a signalized intersection which would allow Dr. Tozier's patients to come in and out and as well as ultimately the bank patrons to come in and out at a signalized intersection and an approved traffic flow DOT best all study and everything like that. And in that process, there was another element that was, see, and this is what happens when you've been around too long, but at that time, John Lord, you may remember, some of you may remember him. He was a mighty powerful fellow in the city of Bangor. He, from a planning perspective, was pretty much dead set against seeing commercial development go beyond Broadway Shopping Center and short of Burley Road. And as you know, that's changed over the years. There's been a lot of different minor pecking away at it, and he had a similar feeling out on Stillwater Avenue, but and that's fallen away by the wayside. So the contract zone was constructed to sort of allay that fear. There were some uses taken out of what's allowed in shopping and personal services. And some of the dimensional requirements, like coverage and pervious surface and things like that, were toned down a little bit. Well, and as I mentioned, during the course of the since the past sixteen years, there have been zone change everywhere from downtown development for urgent care at the three ninety-five, I mean, excuse me, ninety-five Broadway interchange north, excuse me, northeast ice center, up a little ways, Hassan changed, I mean, not Hassan, excuse me, Saint Joe's did the government of social services for their medical thing up the road. So all in between, that kind of that protection for the residential is gone. I wouldn't say gone, but but not as critical as it was. Leadbetter's was another one. And so we're back in, let me finish the last, I got to pay my attention to my notes because I tend to skip over things. Shopping and personal services, some of the dimensional and uses have changed, amended through the city process for other parcels, but it affects this. So what we're really really going towards, I guess I should say, let me go through real quickly these the changes and the impacts and the difference. One of the changes was maximum pervious surface was reduced to sixty-five percent. Shopping and personal service standards is sixty percent and conditional uses seventy, so it was kind of a split the difference. So there really isn't a big change that. And as I mentioned before, there's that requirement in the contract for the curb cut intersection creating a Hassan and Broadway four-way interchange. There was also an agreement, there was fear that with creation of the interchange, not interchange, excuse me, intersection at Hassan and Broadway and the construction of any kind of road through the Van Bro park, maybe they didn't want a straight shot to avoid going straight from Broadway to Hillside as a cut-through. And so that road has been done as part of the bank development, and it has got a jig in the jog, and so it's not really conducive for people speeding through. The other was no retail, fuel, storage tank, garage facilities, fueling things. That was sort of aimed at what eventually Leadbetter's did further down the road out on on Broadway. That was a fear. And storage and materials and warehouse now, those are all really all controlled under shopping and personal services as a conditional use, and you all know that's a much higher bar to to jump over than standard, excuse me, shopping and personal service. And entertainment and recreational facilities were enclosed, were ruled out in the contract zone. They've since become a use in shopping and personal server services, and there were some vegetated buffers required, which is pretty much, they were all done. Parking lots along Broadway, if they were constructed, had to be within setback a minimum twenty-five feet. They were anyway, because there's a detention pond there. And what were the other? There was some buffer restrictions, and then there was some specific restrictions on the construction architectural package for the bank, and that was all built accordingly. So for the first and it really applied to Dr. Tozier's property. I'm laughing at that. There wasn't an agreement that there was a second means of curb cut for his property, which was seven, two hundred and forty feet, I think, from the Broadway entrance. I think that's to his house now, but I'm not not sure. So let me segue into the first item is Dr. Tozier's request. When we started brainstorming this and discussions with the city, I think, Anne, it was at your suggestion that we might want to consider talking to Dr. Tozier so that the contract was relifted from both parcels. And those discussions occurred and hence we're here. So again, it was felt that it was made the clearest land use choice to do both parcels while they're under separate owners. They're not really similar developments to just clean that up, so it will just be two S N P S parcels adjacent to another one. So other than that, that's all I really have to say about Dr. Tozier, and so I'll be quiet and happy to answer your question.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Hang up here while we get through questions. Does staff have any comments on this particular issue?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. Does board members have questions of the applicants representative here? Nobody have any questions? Okay, so I'll open it up to public comment. You can sit down, Fred, if you'd like to. Any public comment on this this item? Any questions from the public? I don't see any in the room. Going to look at Zoom just to see if I see any raised hand on this issue. If not, I'm going to close this to public comment, and the board may now deliberate or move directly to a motion. Any comments or concerns from the board we need to talk about, or do we want to just take this right to a motion? Member Hugh.
Well, I was just gonna say. Said no staff comments, but moving this from S P S contract to S S N P S, that's all in keeping with what's been outlined in the comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan. It is within the growth boundary.
S N P S right there, too.
Thank you, Member Boucher. Member Hugh, did you? Okay, please do.
B and R four-one dash oh one eight, shopping and personal services district with the contract overlay to shopping and personal services district to amend or amending the land development code by changing the map lots as we discussed.
Did you say ought to pass?
Ought to pass.
Yes, okay.
Do we recommend it ought to pass?
Correct. Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Member Maher, second. Any other further comments, questions? Go right to a vote. All in favor, raise your hands. Opposed, we have none. That that item passes. Mr. Marshall, are you going to be up for the next item as well? Okay, come on up. I will, I will just read this out so everyone knows. Again, it is very similar to the first item, but it's to amend the land development code by changing a parcel of land located at seven twenty-seven Broadway, which is map lot R forty-one zero twenty from contract shopping in personal services district to only shopping and personal services district by removing the contract conditions. Said area of land contains approximately three point three one acres total, and the applicant owner in this case is Varnbro Inc. And is there anything in addition to add to this particular item?
No, it really is. The only difference is all the standards or the contract conditions for the building and the development of Varnbro's property were met in the construction of the of the bank building, and the only difference is there is a rather sizable chunk that's behind there and on a butt hillside that Rick Bernie's here from that they would love to at some point develop, and this would open a door to a little more flexibility. And we'd obviously have to conform to shopping and personal service, both permitted and conditional uses, any project going forward on there. So I'd rather, yeah, I won't.
Okay, thank you.
Go on too much.
That's all right. Staff comments at all on this one? Nope, none. Thank you. Board member, board members have any questions on this item for Mr. Marshall? None. Public comments? I'll open this up to public comments. Seeing none in the room, none online, which is not really a surprise, is very similar. First item, I'll close the public comments, and we can go right to a vote here unless board members have any other concerns or questions they want to discuss. A motion? Member Brush?
I move that we recommend the zone change to amend the shopping and personal services district, the contract overlay to a shopping and personal district services district for map lot R forty-one dash twenty and ought to pass.
Excellent, thank you. Do I have a second? Number Boucher, thank you. And seeing no further discussion, all in favor? Raise your hand. Any opposed? None. Your item surpassed. Thank you, gentlemen. Yep. Okay, next item on the agenda is zone change to amend the land development code by changing a parcel of land located on Ohio Street at map lot R fourteen zero zero six C from urban residence one, that's U R D one, and R R and agricultural R R A to low-density residential district. Said area of land contains approximately nine point one one acres total. The applicant owner is Harvey and Daniel Sprague. Reminder to the board, we reviewed this item recently, so they should be familiar with it. And again, this is an ought to pass or ought not to pass. Would the applicant like to come forward? No applicant here this evening unless the applicant is on Zoom.
Use the raise hand function if you want to be brought over.
Yeah, I don't see any. So for the board members, generally, we've got two choices here. We can either vote on this as it is or we can table it to another meeting. Anyone have any suggestions, comments on this?
Perhaps we could see if there's public comment. The last time, there was quite a few comments about this is a different.
So you want to go through the process?
Yeah. To see, I mean, if the previous commenters had been satisfied and the neighbors aren't disturbed by this as they were the last time. Perhaps there's not a problem.
Okay, so so we can go through the process like normal and still table it if we want to or not as we get to a motion. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I'm good with that. All right, so does staff have any comments on this one?
No, just to note with the applicant's absence that previously you had reviewed and may not made a recommendation to pass for high-density residential, so the applicant has come back with low-density residential that is, he feels is more in keeping with the development around the property, the subject property.
Thank you, Director Krieg. Public comments. I will open this up to public comments on this item. Any public comments? Seeing none in the room, I'll look to Zoom for any public comments on this item. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comments on this item. And so it takes us back to deliberations on this as to whether we want to vote for this tonight. I I personally am in favor of, I mean, I feel like we got a lot of information last time this was in front of us. I'm comfortable moving forward. But if others feel differently, please say so.
I'm comfortable with voting tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Member Maher. Any other concerns? Okay. I'd be happy to hear a motion on this item. Okay. Member Hugh?
I'll move that we make a recommendation to council to pass this zone change ought to pass, map lot R fourteen oh six dash C, urban residence one district, U R D one, and rural residence and agricultural district to low-density residential district, L D R as as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second, Member Brush? Second, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Liberations? I'll go to a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. None opposed? That motion passes. Moving on to item four on the agenda. See, we're getting, we're getting through this, folks. We're getting through this. Item four on the agenda is to amend the land development code by changing a parcel of land located at eleven ninety-two Ohio Street, map lot R twenty-three zero zero one from rural residence and agricultural district to neighborhood service district. Said area of land contains approximately one acre total. The applicant slash owner is Bangor Grange number three seventy-two. And again, this is, this would be a recommendation to ought to pass or ought not to pass. And if the applicant is here, would they please come forward and present? I see none in the room.
No, there's two. Do you want? No? Okay. They're affiliated. They don't want to be the app.
Okay. We'll get you. Thank you. We'll get you. If the applicant is on Zoom, please raise your hand. I see none. Staff comments on this item?
No.
Let's move to public comments on this item.
James Nickerson, Bangor, Maine. Basically, we've, I'm a member of the Grange, and in the past, Grange has had a hard time financially and stuff with, you know, active members and stuff to keep the place going. And so basically, we were looking to change the zoning so that we could have a an antique store and part of the Grange where they still have their meeting rooms and everything. Nothing changes as far as the Grange goes. But from a financial standpoint, it's really going to help the Grange continue on. But from a financial standpoint, it's really going to help the Grange continue on. And that's basically why I'm here to just, it's, it's going to save the Grange basically. And uh, it's not a big operation, just going to be a nice little antique store and still have all the use of the Grange and all the members. So it's basically it.
Excellent. Thank you. That's helpful to know. Appreciate it. Any other public comments on this one? I see none. I'm going to close this to public comments. Board members, any further discussion, concerns, questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion? Member brush?
I mo- move that we recommend ought to pass the zone change for map lot R twenty-three dash zero one rural residence and agricultural district to a neighborhood and services district. This is at uh, eleven ninety-two Ohio Street.
Excellent, thank you. Do I have a second? Member Mahar. And all in favor, raise your hand. None opposed, this item also passes. Okay. Uh, to, I think what most of you are waiting for to item five on the agenda is uh, to amend the land development code by creating regulations and allowances for short-term rentals. The board does recommend, uh, recognize that as I mentioned earlier, we've received multiple emails and phone calls or notes of phone calls from the staff. Um, and uh, so we've had a chance to review those prior to the meeting. Um, we have also held at least two public meetings on this item previously. And staff has been working on this, uh, this issue for roughly three years.
Three.
Yeah. And again, just because of the large number of people here that I think are interested in this thing, we're going to ask that you limit your uh, public comments when we get to the public comments, keep them brief, keep them straightforward, let us know where you stand on the issue. Uh, Anya behind me will have a uh, timer going and it will kind of shut you down if you get going on too long. So thank you, uh, Director Krieg.
Yeah, I do have a presentation. Cody, can you pull that up, please? Okay, you can go to the next slide. So, um, just to uh, refresh and for people that, you know, uh, that are here that may not have heard this presentation before. Um, I just want to kind of go through um, how we got here, uh, what the requirements are, uh, just so um, people understand exactly what's being proposed in, in this um, full proposal for short-term rentals. The first is, why are we doing this right now? And uh, right now, there are no uh, regulations or provisions for this currently. So technically, um, it's not allowed use. Um, and we have about, you know, we've been tracking um, the numbers of what we have um, for short-term rentals. And we have about a hundred and thirty-six that hosted and on, that's hosted and non-hosted um, uh, short-term rentals right now. Um, in two thousand nineteen, the Affordable Housing Work Group, one of the recommendations was uh, that the city prepare a policy for short-term rentals. They didn't say what that policy should be, but they said we need to have a policy. So for the last few years on and off with the COVID, um, and you know, staff capacity, you know, we've been working on this effort to try to come up with a policy. Um, we have um, received a lot of questions from people who are renting now or who are interested in renting. You know, to get that clarity, that is definitely an issue. Um, and we wanted to be proactive, you know, a lot of communities that um, are on the coast are dealing with this, you know, that something, a use that's been going on for years and years. And now suddenly they're trying to, you know, curb it or, you know, somehow regulate it and control it and they're having a really hard time. Bangor is in a really good position where um, you know, the use is, is here, it's prevalent. But it's not at the rate of other communities. So this is a good time to have the conversation about what you want to see happen uh, with this use. And again, in the comprehensive plan, we kind of deliberately, you know, just kept it somewhat vague that we would have this conversation to um, have some kind of regulation um, for short-term rentals. Next slide. I went too far. So we had um, presented the background study at the um, February sixteenth uh, twenty twenty-one um, bed and planning board meeting. We've done a survey on it. We had some Zoom workshops when, when we were um, you know, during uh, COVID, when we're meeting in public. Um, and then this last summer, we had two public workshops and um, and we've had multiple discussions with Business and Economic Development Committee as well as the Planning Board. Next slide. I'm sorry, Cody, can you? Um, oh, yeah.
If Cody starts it from the, the current slide, view the presentation, that should help.
Cody, if you can do full screen on those slides, I'm not sure he can. Okay, good. Sure. Okay, so, next one, yep. I'm trying to do it on my screen too. So what we heard from the public was um, a lot of different opinions and, and you've gotten them from emails and phone calls as well. Um, now that we've, you know, released the, the proposed language. But, you know, we hear a lot of issues about equity. Um, it, it can, on one hand, the equity issue is, you know, we're, we're living here year-round. People are renting near, nearby and people coming in and out all the time. Is that equitable and fair? And then on the other side, there's people that say, hey, I own this house. It's my house. If I want to rent it on a short-term basis, I should be, it's not equitable for me to not be able to rent. So there's definitely, you know, opinions on both sides when it comes to equity issues. Um, there also is a lot of um, discussion and research that's gone on over the last decade about the effect of short-term rentals on the market and housing stock in terms of displacement. If, if something is being rented short-term, then it's not being rented long-term. So um, you know, there's issues with that and also with the effect on the market. If you know, if you're buying a piece of property, if you know you can rent it for X amount of dollars per week or, you know, per day. Um, you know, that can often drive the housing price up because there, they know they're going to have that income, that extra income to be able to make that mortgage payment. Um, there's also concerns with illegal activity in, in some cases on, in short-term rentals. People renting it, um, renting a house to have illegal activity becomes a police issue. Um, and the negative effects on the neighborhood, that feeling of um, we've, I, I've called it in the past neighborhood erosion where people, you know, don't know their neighbor because people are moving in and out all the time. Um, and so there's, there's that negative impact on the neighborhood because it, the neighborhood starts to feel very transient. And then from people who rent, they really see this as extra income. A lot of people rent out a bedroom or two in their home as a way to have extra income. Um, they um, you know, feel that because they're getting that extra income, they can invest more in their property to have their properties better maintained than they might otherwise. Um, and there's a concern from people who do rent that feel like, hey, why are we being so over-regulated for this use? Um, and one thing that we did find that you don't see as much on, in coastal communities that have short-term rentals is we have, you know, different types of people that want to do short-term rentals. It's not just the visiting public, the people on vacation. It's actually also people that are here for temporary work purposes. Medical um, professionals as well as construction professionals. Next slide. So what we, um, some of the common themes though, as we, you know, had these conversations with the public, had these conversations with um, counselors is, you know, that there is some kind of license and inspection. And that's pretty standard practice, no matter, you know, communities allow, just allow them in different areas, that type of thing, or put caps on it. But one thing is pretty clear is that um, there is some kind of um, check and balance in terms of an inspection, making sure there's life safety codes are met and it's a safe place for people. Um, and that there is something different about people that rent that live in the house or live on the premises of the, of uh, you know, of the um, the dwelling that they're renting or the unit that they're renting. And people who don't live in, you know, don't live in Bangor at all and are just renting it when they're not here. That they're really, that there is a differentiation between that. And that's also very common um, in other communities that choose to regulate short-term rentals. So, one a- aspect is um, of trying to regulate the use is, is looking at a, a possible cap on the non-hosted rentals citywide. And the reason for that is, you know, it's, it's trying to strike a balance between trying to allow people to use their property as we just talked about for that extra income, but also for, to provide for the traveling public, whether they're here as a medical professional or they're here with their family um, on vacation, you know, that, that there definitely is a consumer out there that wants to be in Bangor and wants to be in a neighborhood or they want to, or they need a whole house or they want an apartment or they just need a room. And, you know, to have that balance um, is is one way to get that balance is to have a cap. So that you're allowing it, but you're capping it at a certain amount. And the other um, cap is having um, the number of um, rentals that can happen in an apartment building. Because one thing that cities find is people buy an entire apartment building complex and they completely convert it to um, short-term rentals. And again, that goes back to the displacement issue. You know, we're, we're in a housing crisis. Uh, we don't want to have that level of displacement of units. But again, it's the balance of that and people that do want to be here um, and, and want to be able to rent an apartment. So having that cap on uh, apartments as well. Next slide. So, um, what we started out with was trying to define the use uh, of short-term rentals, that it's renting one to two rooms in a dwelling or an apartment um, for less than thirty days. That's pretty standard practice, you know, anything over thirty days. Typically, you're in a lease arrangement. Um, and again, that kind of speaks to a lot, some of the, some of the concerns we heard very early when we had these conversations where, hey, I, you know, hey, I'm a person who has a short-term rental and I, I have medical professionals staying with me for two to three months. This will not affect them. They will continue to be able to do that um, without coming under these regulations. It's people that rent for less than thirty days. That's part of this regulation. And it also does not include, you know, the hotels, motels, inns, bed and breakfast and boarding homes. Those are separate licensing. Uh, they actually have to get a state license um, for those uses. They come under completely different building code. Um, so, you know, they're regulated in a, in a different way. Um, and it will, you know, we're, it will be considered a commercial use, um, not a customary use of a dwelling. So again, that longer-term rental um, will be considered, you know, continue to be considered that customary resident use of a dwelling and um, and just for people that are concerned about singling out short-term, um, short-term rentals to be regulated. We also are working on a project that the, the council's been working on for years and that is having a rental registry for all rentals. So that's a separate project that we're working on. We're trying to, working on them slightly in tandem. Um, but that will be also be coming up. Next slide. So the hosted versus non-hosted, um, because again, you know, what we heard from people was people that rent their own home, they live there. Um, you know, those, that type of use should be protected um, and allowed. So um, so we define hosted rentals as the owner operator residing on the same property as the unit being rented. That would be allowed in all zones. It allow residential. Um, and the property has to be considered the primary residence of the owner operated, operator. Um, and accessory dwelling units would be included in this provision. So if you own a house and, you know, you have an accessory dwelling unit, a garage apartment type of thing, you could either move to the garage apartment and rent your house out or vice versa, um, and still be considered hosted. Next slide. And then so the non-hosted rental is neither the owner or the operator resides on the same property as the units um, being rented. So, um, that will also be allowed in the same zones, but that is what will be subject in this proposal for a cap. And the cap is one percent of the, of the total number of dwelling units in the city. Um, and that is, and we use the assessing records as our record for that. So um, if this were to pass, the initial um, cap would be about a hundred and fifty-three. And so that number may change at an annual basis. Um, and so that will get evaluated on annually to see where we're at with our um, number of dwelling units. Next slide. So again, for requirements for all short-term rentals, they're capped at fifty percent in the multifamily uh, apartment building. It does not get to, um, that fifty percent does not get to condominium buildings because each unit is separately owned. So this fifty percent would not cover um, condominium projects. It would only cover an apartment building that's owned by a single entity. Um, and the other, um, the other cap that is recommended in, is, is part of this um, proposal is five, that you can only have five um, rentals per person or entity. Um, LLCs, you know, we are created very easily. So we um, you know, to try to get to that loophole, we did put the cap in uh, per person or entity. And all short-term rentals required to obtain a license and be inspected. There'll be a, a sort of a checklist of life safety requirements that um, the uh, code in the fire department will be taking a look at. And it's uh, the license renewed annually and the inspection is every three years. Um, we have a proposed fee for uh, two hundred and fifty dollars if it requires an inspection. And if it's not requiring an inspection, it's a hundred dollars. And if this were adopted, what we did put in was a six-month grace period from the date of enactment. And the reason for that is um, a lot of people, you know, book short-term rentals well in advance of when they're coming to stay. So we wanted to give um, people the chance to be compliant with these regulations to, you know, either, you know, come in under the cap or you know, if they, if they don't make it into the cap, that they would cease to be able to um, to rent. So um, and then next slide. So again, um, as you've did a, a few times already this evening, uh, you're, the planning board's action is a recommendation. Um, and that the, if the amendment uh, ought to pass, then a majority of council would um, has to vote to approve it. But if you uh, recommend that the amendment sought not to pass, then a two-thirds vote of council is needed to approve. And I'll take any questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Director Krieg. Um, so do board members have questions for Director Krieg first? Before we get to public comment. Member Hume.
Yep. It depends if it's considered a multifamily, right?
Um. Yes, I believe the language does say, um, full language does say that if you're in an apartment building and you live in that building, it would be considered hosted. But the, yes, but the cap of fifty percent of the building would still apply. Um, we, the slide might have had a, but I'm pretty sure the full language does have that, yes.
Right. Correct. But you still have the cap of five.
Okay, so.
Cause you're a single entity.
Sure, absolutely.
No, five permits. So it's only five permits. So in that scenario, um, you would only be able to rent five.
Yes, the cap is five units.
Per per entity.
Yeah. So yes, the, to clarify, if you had a larger apartment building, even if fifty percent of the parking building was, say, ten units, you could still only do five because there's a cap of five per person or entity. Does that make sense? Yeah. Yep, you can't. You can't evade the cap that way. It's fine.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, the license goes to the dwelling unit. So if you have multiple units, you know, you have ten units. Um, each unit has its own permit. Okay.
Thank you. Is everyone clear on what the the, what was just said? No, somebody's shaking their head no, because I thought it was a little confusing too. Could you just sort of sort that out a little bit? This?
Right, if you own, if you live, if you own an apartment building and you live there, you still are subject to only allowing, you can only, no matter how big the apartment building is, if um it, since it's a hosted, you're gonna only have five. You can only have five permits.
Right, but if you have five buildings, you still only have five.
You only have five.
Yep.
Yeah.
Five, five units, one in each one. You can't have five in each building.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Did that help? Okay, hold on. I'm gonna get through the board first and I'll get to public. Comments, questions? Um, to any member brush?
Yeah, what's the potential for a conflict between the the fifty percent cap on uh on multifamily dwellings and the one percent cap on hosted? Is it possible that they could be in conflict?
No, it's the one percent cap is for non-hosted. And that's a citywide cap. So that means non-hosted rentals, if if one fifty-three is the number that we ultimately use, we'll just use that um for discussion. If it's one fifty-three, then that that's the number of permits the city will issue citywide for a non-hosted short-term rental. And that's not, that's separate from the apartment um cap, because that's a cap within a building itself.
So just hypothetically, hypothetically.
Right.
Say um, say we were close to getting to that one fifty-three cap, there were a hundred and fifty-two short-term rentals in the city. And somebody was in an apartment building and they wanted to rent out five units in that apartment building, they couldn't, because there's only one cap left. Or I mean, I'm one unit left before you reach the cap, so they can only do one rental. Yeah.
Fisher, member Hayes?
Yep.
And is the cap just on the non-hosted?
That's correct, just on non-hosted. Hosted, uh, a hosted would not have uh be subject to that cap. They would only be subject to the cap in the the situation if you own, if you live in an apartment building um that you own.
So hosted would, they would, they would still have to register.
Yes, absolutely.
Everybody would still have to register.
Everybody has to register. Whether you're hosted or non-hosted.
Okay.
Member Busher?
I appreciate that question, because I had the same one. I didn't realize that we, there is no cap other than the fifty percent of the available units on the hosted um short-term rentals. I, so that's valuable for me. I did want to turn to the LLC and the the item about entity versus individuals. Uh, so an individual or an entity can only have five of these, whether it's hosted, non-hosted. It can only have fi- uh five per individual, right?
Correct.
If that's the case, with, so it's straightforward if it's an individual, but when it's an entity and the LLCs are there, there can be there's room for people to get multiple LLCs that have different registered agents and still be members in the LLC. And my concern is that someone will hoard uh the the licenses through, you know, someone who's well-connected and has a good accountant or lawyer is gonna get a lot of um LLCs and end up picking up like fifteen of these somehow, because we don't have, uh, I don't think there's um requirement to disclose all LLC membership, just the registered agent. And if they're clever about it and intentional, they would, it wouldn't be during the registration and licensing period, we wouldn't have any insight as to whether the LLC has membership that already has licenses. Is that too complicated a question?
No, it's not, because we had a long conversation about it with, um, we worked with an attorney at Drummond Woodson down in Portland to create um this ordinance. And she said as part of the licensure that they have to list who is in the LLC.
All members? They don't just, okay. Well, that's wonderful. So that takes care of that question.
Yeah, she said we can ask that.
Um, a question I have is about if you do get a license, are you required, you know, similar when they have a building um a building plan that comes before us, they have like a year or something to start building on it. If you got a license, you have to start doing short-term rentals at that property? Or can you get the license and then keep renting long-term like normal and then have it in your back pocket? That you have this license in case you ever want to sell the property and transfer the license. Or someday down the road, when your tenant leaves, you'll have that option to transfer that way. Again, I'm thinking about people who are gonna use this and just sit on them. Just try, trying to see if anyone's thought about that.
Right. I mean, they're not transferable, the the.
If you sell the property, it says it's available for trans, at least that's how I read the, sorry for interrupting you.
No, that's.
But that's how I read it, was that if you sell the property to someone else, they can transfer the license. But you can't transfer it, say you have it on this street, Street A. And you have another property on Street B, you can't like transfer the license to the other address. But I thought I I read that if you ever sell the property, the the license is transferable. Did I misunderstand that piece?
Well, if it's in that same year, but every year the cap, we're gonna have the cap, they're gonna have to, you know, come in under that cap every year.
Yeah, it would be treated as a new license, so, yeah.
Right.
Similar question is if they um, if you have a you know, think of university towns, you know, we're a university town. I think of seasonal towns that have seasonal work. We have some seasonal work here where you would have a short-term tenant, a short-term quote-unquote, who's here for about six months or eight months during the school year and then leaves, and then your your apartment's uh available. Would you be able to bounce back and forth between short-term and long-term rental under this license, or are you required to be consistently short-term in that property and keep it locked down for short-term all the time?
No, you wouldn't be required to, like, if somebody wanted, if somebody had a short-term rental license and they wanted to only do it, you know, for four weeks a year. You know, that's, that's their choice.
During like the the summer.
We're not gonna check that.
The one percent that you mentioned, and again, I didn't realize that that was only for the unhost, for the non-hosted. Um, is that typical from um what's being considered like a best practice? I know there's quite a few articles about this. About uh what percent, what tipping point does it start to have a detrimental impact on housing costs and rental costs and things like that? Is one percent considered universally by planners like yourself? Uh, municipal leaders, uh, a goo- a good measure? Um, my, when I, based on my cursory review, I saw that national averages can be something like two point something, almost three percent, and then in tourist-fizzy areas or popular cities, that it's much higher.
Yeah, it is higher in the, in tourist cities. And um, we chose one percent, um, you know, we had some counselors saying, you know, we want to be able to say that we're only allowing one percent of our housing for this use. I mean, it was sort of a, you know, um, I I think it's easier to increase than it is to decrease. Um, because if you, if you start at three percent, for example, and you find that that's not working, you know, that's too many, you know, a- as you do your evaluation of how the use is going, it's really hard to pull back, because now you have a lot of non-conformity protections out there, where if you start low at one percent and you want to, over time, increase, it's a lot easier to increase.
On a different topic, if I can keep monopolizing the conversation, I wanted to talk about recourse and um and if somebody's still post, I saw in the language what happens if somebody keeps um doing this outside, without licensure, is still renting property short-term but hasn't gotten approved. Um, what if there's a a location that's deemed um that's getting a lot of reports of problems, either illicit you, uh, drug use, uh, human trafficking, um, uh, maybe just bad parking? All kinds of things.
Right, and there's, since, there's a lot of complaints, um, we can evaluate that to not, you know, to where they wouldn't be able to get a license.
And can you revive, revoke an existing license as well?
I don't think we put in an existing one, but.
Existing as far as revoking it? What do you mean?
Revoking a license because there's illegal activity. I don't remember that.
No, I think it's fines, so, and the fines increase um as long as that violation continues, so. And it's pretty high fine.
Is there an assumption somewhere that if there's outstanding fines, that they won't be re-upped when it comes time to do their licensure in the following year? Like?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's something that that we can say that we're not gonna grant a license if there's issues.
Yes, and this does actually say we have the authority to suspend or revoke a license.
Is it this?
Violated this, so.
Sorry, Anya, um, sorry. Planning analyst Colette, I um is it discretionary or are there clear uh like operational guidelines? Like if you hit this threshold, X, Y, Z, or is there a thought that there's gonna, that's gonna be part of the plan as we operationalize it?
Hold on.
I remember this section, but I don't think it's spelled out like, if you do this, it's that. Um, it's always the fine. I saw the range of the possible fine and then the additional lawyer fees and items like that.
I mean, yeah, it's upon petition by the code enforcement office. If after notice in a public hearing, the Board of Appeals determines the license holder has violated this chapter. So it has to be determined through the public process before they can revoke the license.
Those are the items that jumped out to me. Uh, thanks.
Well, you're welcome. Thank you. Yes, member Hayes?
Remind me again how the one percent was determined, was it fun?
The assessing records. No, just the number of dwelling units in the city and based on um the assessing records of that year.
So it would include apartment buildings?
Correct.
Duplexes.
In terms of determining the number of units, yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Number brush, and then member Mahar.
In one of, one of the paragraphs, paragraph G, you say specifically the proposed changes update the city code of ordinances uh in specific zones, and you have a whole list of zones. Are there any zones that they're not allowed in?
They're allowed in all zones that allow residential. The only zones they're not allowed in are industrial and purely commercial zones, simply because you can't have residential there, so it wouldn't make sense to have a short-term rental where there's no residential. So those are the only zones that it would not be allowed in.
I I couldn't hear the last that you said.
So the only zones they're not allowed in are the industrial and commercial zones, just because there's no residential there, so you you couldn't have a short-term rental there. There's no residential, so, yeah.
Thank you. Member Mahar?
Yes, uh, and you would mention that the council has been for a while and is now actively considering uh requiring long-term rentals to register.
Yep.
So the city can have an inventory of where they are and contact.
Oh, it's, it's up to, it's at a staff level right now to create the final proposal, but we have received direction to create a proposal, so we're working on it.
Would that also, uh, I don't know if it's been discussed at staff level or at the council level, uh, but would that also include requirement for them to be licensed and to be inspected?
Yes.
Same safety.
Right, the exact same checklist. It would be the same checklist, yeah.
I have uh one comment, more so than a question. Um, I saw where what you showed were um non-host uh hos- hosted rentals. Um, the ordinance actually says the owner must be on premises when the rental is occupied. And that's different than what the slide said. The slide said the owner needs to occupy one of the units and it must be their primary residence. But demanding an owner be on the premises when the rental is occupied
Mm-hmm.
seems uh al- almost impossible.
Well, that, the hosted ones then are for people who either have, you know, are renting a bedroom or um, or their a- a- a accessory dwelling unit, or, you know, or if they have a two-family type of thing.
So to clarify, um primarily what probably code enforcement would be looking at to determine if it's hosted is if somebody has a homestead exemption on that property. Um, that's generally what's used to determine if it's their permanent residence. They're not gonna go and and monitor the property to see if they're on the premises the whole time while somebody's staying there. It's, it's
Right.
You know, it's, is it their primary residence? And that determines if it's a hosted rental.
Right, and in terms of the the licensure, you know, they have to provide us, you know, so if there is, if there are issues that, you know, there's a local con, you know, that there's somebody that we're contacting uh that can, you know, solve a problem if there's a- any issues with a rental.
Yeah, I, I think I I understand that fairly well, and I'm completely supportive of this idea of being able to get ahold of somebody if there's trouble or if there's, you know, something that needs to be dealt with. Um, but the way it's worded, the owner must be on the premises when the rental is occupied seems just obtrusive. If I have a a, a, you know, a rental unit and I want to take the weekend and go visit friends, it sounds almost like I can't do that from that wording. You know, it's I I have a hard time of that, that one piece. That's the only piece I have a hard time with. Anyway, um unless board members have further com- Yes, member.
Yeah, so if I own an apartment.
Yeah, go ahead.
It it can be, because you're on the premises, you're in the building.
Right.
Yes.
So you're hosted, because you're living there. Right.
I'm going to go to public comment. You've been, you've been itching to get up here, yeah.
I gotta get home, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, alright, we're get, we're gonna give you three minutes and then you.
Got an early morning tomorrow, so, yeah.
Give your name if you would and where you live.
Yes, my name is Brendan. I live on Essex Street in Brewer. And before I lived there, I was living out of my own office when I first moved to this town, because this housing crisis is very real and it's affecting us. this housing crisis is very real and it's affecting us in major ways. I'm currently living in an apartment that took me a year and a half to find after moving here because I couldn't find anything in my price range because there's so little affordable housing available. This is the exact opposite of what we need to be doing right now. Short-term rentals are not the answer to any of our problems. In fact, they will only exacerbate the housing crisis. We can't afford to give up even one percent of our housing stock in this town to this industry when we already have more than twenty hotels around Bangor and there are ta- hundreds of unhoused people on our streets right now. What we need to be focusing on is bringing down the cost of housing and increasing the housing stocks available, not making it possible for landlords to turn their long-term rentals into short-term rentals to quick, to turn a quick buck. This is the op, this will only exacerbate the housing crisis. We need to be moving in the opposite direction of this. Moreover, the advisory committee uh for racial uh equi- equity, inclusion and human rights should have been consulted on this because it will directly impact vulnerable groups like the unhoused and those with mental disabilities. They were not consulted on this, as I have spoken with a number of members of that committee. So there is no reason why we should allow this to pass to go before with a should-pass recommendation. It is the wrong policy to enact. It will make the problems worse and it should not even be up for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. You, you kept the point in, in brief. I appreciate that. Would like to speak next.
Hi, my name is Patrick Kamik, a long-term Bangor resident. I live on Outer Essex Street in Bangor. Uh, I'm just kind of perplexed that just before I went on vacation, I got this letter from the, the city that, you know, all this stuff is going on. I don't know anything about this. But I know that they're saying that within a hundred feet of my residence, you know, the, the, contemplating short-term rentals. Now, my neighbor that currently, that had presently owned property across the street from me had a big parcel right there and he talked about putting condominiums in there. I'm kind of concerned that, you know, if we crack this door open that, you know, I might get a bunch of small houses over there or, or short-term rentals and have people coming and going out of my neighborhood. I mean, that's, that's a what is it? It's an agricultural area, always has been. And uh, you know, if you guys are gonna do something like this, I, I would suggest doing it in a small part of town, see how it works out. I mean, if, I know you have registered ARB and A's or whatever the heck they are. But uh you know, it sounds like a lot of confusion going on here. Nobody really has anything done. Has anybody done a comparison like with Portland? You mentioned Portland. Are they doing this now? Is there a town?
Yep, they have a cap.
So they, they have it all worked out?
They use a cap.
Okay, and, and, and it's working for them?
It seems to be, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm just concerned that uh, you know, I, I, I don't necessarily want to, I, we, we already have a mess on Essex Street down towards Bangor now where they're putting in a whole bunch, sixty units of housing and the judge just stopped that and I'm just concerned about, you know, that moving out my way. I mean, I'm just a, just a farmer out there. I have a little vegetable stand, retired. I, I don't want to see it. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about it, so. And like I say, I, I didn't get this until, you know, a couple days before I went on vacation and then I see it and you know, I think we need to have a little bit more discussion, get myself up just enough on what's going on here. I guess that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Just, ju- just for folks to understand here a little bit, the uh the notice goes out. In this case, it went out to almost everybody because the zones were almost everywhere. That's no indication of something happening next door to you necessarily. But it is a change to the zoning in that area that you are in. And so we want to give everyone notice so that everyone is aware. Um, but that doesn't mean there's any indication that something is imminently going to happen next to you. I just want to make that clear. Uh, who would, you would like to go next?
I'm George Elliott. I live in um Bangor. Uh, I don't really have a, a lot to say. I just came down here to really see, get a little more insight at what was going on. And in my opinion, looks like it's a good plan. Looks like it's well thought out. My only thought was uh, you have a hundred and fifty some odd units of uh, but non-hosted, I believe. Corrected, I get that, yeah, non-hosted uh, short-term. Well, has, has that number, and you can change it annually, who gets involved in making that change? Does, is there a lot of input uh available for that?
For the number, the one, the, for the cap number?
Yes.
Um, that was, you know, one percent i- is what's being proposed.
Okay.
One percent of uh the total number of housing units as determined by the assessing department every year.
Okay, but does is that pretty much one that everybody can really agree on or is it subject to to uh lobby in and all this kind of stuff that can go on? Is it to increase it?
No, as we were um talking earlier, um, you know, there are communities that use larger numbers, you know, three percent or two and a half percent. And, you know, w- we sort of wanted to do a, a minimum of one percent just to um allow for, again, to allow for the use but at a, at a very minimal number and see how it works.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, my concern was, it's, it sounds, sounded like a very reasonable number. My concern was that I'd hate to see number creep over the years, you know, and, and it could be a real problem if it did, but you say that, that won't happen.
Well, in order to increase, we would have to go through this process again.
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
Good evening. My name is Don Kamik. I live on Outer, Outer Essex Street. And I just, I'm concerned about this whole process. We got a map, uh, couldn't understand the map. A letter really didn't explain anything on it, okay? We, as my brother said, we live on Outer Essex Street. It's rural. Uh, you know, uh, and you just mentioned that uh this may not concern us right now, okay, but it could in the future. And, you know, I certainly don't want this to happen out there either. Uh, you know, we have a very uh, uh friendly neighborhood. Uh, we don't need a bunch of people, strangers coming out, uh, building these houses. They could be these small houses. We don't know. But, you know, this is a place to stop it. And this is a place to turn around and look at the neighborhoods, okay? Whether Portland does, whatever Portland does, really doesn't concern us. This is Bangor. This isn't Portland, okay? So that's my concern. Okay, so, you know, take that in consideration and please, you know, uh, make your decisions based on that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go, there's a hand raised on Zoom, uh, so if we can bring forth, I think it's Jeremy. Yep, Jeremy.
Hello, good evening. Uh, thank you so much for uh holding this hearing tonight. Uh, I just wanted to come and speak out against uh short-term rentals. Uh, a couple of things that I, can you hear me all right?
Yep, we can hear you fine. Could you just introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is uh Jeremy. I live over in Little City. So I am so I am against the uh short-term uh rental allowances. And uh, there are a couple of things that I did want to just speak out on. Um, the first is that during the presentation, we talked about um there being a uh equal claims for equity. And I just wanted to point out that the people who are asking to open up short-term rentals are trying to unilaterally change the character of a neighborhood. And so the balance beam here is not exactly equal on what these equity claims are for people who say I should be allowed to do something with my property versus those who say that the neighborhood character is one way. There are all sorts of reasonable things we already say people can't do with their property. Like I couldn't open a tannery on my property and say, well, I own this. And there's some that seems reasonable. Uh, another thing that I kind of wanted to ask is there is a question about once we open this door, what is preventing someone from just not registering with the state? Or with the city? Like I could just open an Airbnb and not tell anybody. And it's pretty much requires my neighbors to point out that there is an Airbnb that may or may not be illegal. So I don't know if there was any provision that would point out how we are monitoring to make sure that we are inside of this Airbnb limit. And then you have an answer?
No, go ahead. I, I can answer that if you, but go ahead if you want to have another question.
I, I don't have a question. I do have more statements, though.
Um, so in terms of the monitoring, um, we have already been monitoring, there's companies that, that kind of scour all of these sites and monitor, um, you know, where there are short-term rentals in your community because there's a lot of different sites. It's not just Airbnb. Um, there's lots of other sites that people use, so um, if this were to pass, we would continue to use that service so that we can do um, you know, be more proactive with enforcement as opposed to waiting for a neighbor to call us, you know, we're hoping that we'll, with this service, we'll be able to monitor to make sure that people that are advertising for a short-term rental have a permit or license, excuse me.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Certainly, go ahead.
Uh, so to date, what has been your success rate on tracking um non-compliant properties in the city as it is?
Well, we, we haven't started it yet because these regulations are still going through the enactment process.
But as I understand it, we don't currently have regulations that allow it, so wouldn't it be de facto um, illegal or not allowed?
Yeah, they're, they're not allowed right now, um, but because we're writing regulations, we haven't enforced it because we're sort of waiting for the regulations to come in so that we can contact people and um, you know, work with people to become compliant.
Um, do you have?
Hey, Jeremy.
Yes, sir.
Jeremy, I gotta cut you short here because your three minutes is up. Do you have a quick statement to make before you get done?
I guess the last, I guess the last thing that I would just want to say is that Airbnb and the like, short-term rentals have encouraged a grassroots shift of our zoning rules that are empowered by those who already have too much and inflict a housing shortage on those who don't have enough. And that's how I would like to end it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Alright, I'm gonna go to Rebecca next on Zoom. She seemed to be the next person up. If you unmute Rebecca, we should be able to hear you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Rebecca Mooney. I live in the Hillbrook neighborhood. And I just wanted to come on and speak out against short-term rentals as well. Um, for small neighborhoods, we just moved to Bangor about five years ago. Um, we had looked in the Portland area. We didn't like it. We loved Bangor and the small-town feel that it has, the nice welcoming neighborhoods that it has. And I feel like short-term rentals can absolutely change that feel very quickly um, with the comings and goings. When people buy homes in certain neighborhoods, we, we looked in several neighborhoods. None of them were commercial neighborhoods. None, none of them were rental neighborhoods. So I don't think that when you buy a home specifically in a residential neighborhood area to have that kind of taken out from under you, I don't think that that's the right thing to do. Um, so that's just from my personal viewpoint as far as a city standpoint and as far as city council and the planning board. Um, this point has been brought up before and one of the links right on the planning board website was talking about how this exacerbates the housing crisis. I don't understand how allowing it at all. Um, and especially with no cap on hosted uh rentals, I don't understand how that's a responsible move to make by the city for the city residents um who are not able to find affordable and not able to find readily available housing. Um, I haven't heard of any big sweeping plans to fix any of the housing issues, shortages. I- is there any huge plan that, that we've not been notified of? That would kind of counteract wanting to allow these short-term rentals?
Rebecca, your time's up, but I'd be happy to answer that question because I think it's something other people are, are wondering. Um, and I, I would refer anyone who is interested to uh look at the uh city's website and the comprehensive plan. There is in-depth information in the comprehensive plan, as Ann mentioned earlier uh of all of these things and the steps that we should be taking as a city, as a planning board, as city staff, as citizens to um deal with these problems. Uh, and so the, the, the objective of the comprehensive plan is to understand what's uh troubling our city. Um, homelessness gets mentioned a lot. That's another one of these things that's involved in this equation. Um, lack of housing certainly, and all of that is in the comprehensive plan and that it, we spent two years probably putting that together, trying to come up with solutions for all of these problems. So there's been a lot of thought put into it.
Just, well, I just want to add one more thing. Also, on the city's website, um, if you go to the homepage on the left and there's a sort of a, a blue bar that you can scroll down for certain topics and there is a topic in there for housing data um that uh staff has put together um that lists out all of uh the housing projects that uh have been permitted and constructed and also the other things that we've done to remove barriers to housing, all of the zoning changes that have been done. Uh, the ARPA investments and the block grant investments in housing. So you can get all of that in one spot on this, on the city's um website.
Thank you, Director Krieg. Rebecca, you seem to have one more question, but your time's up, so I'll let you, should, throw your question at us. I'm not sure I'll answer it, but anyway.
I, I just wanted to follow up on something that you had said. So, so there is all of this plan. Could this be something that is held off on and stopped until all of those other plans have been put in place and really helped the housing issue that is currently happening?
The, uh, I'll answer that in two ways and then um I'm gonna move on to the next person. One, one is there are priorities given in the comprehensive plan, which I think is important. We tried to come up with priorities for how we would go about doing things. And I think that's important and I think we should try and keep within that. Um, certainly, there is always the option to kick the can down the road and not do anything about this if that's what the board and the uh city council decides to do. I'm gonna go to the next person.
You.
Yes, Joe.
Uh, Joe Pickering. Thirteen Pond Street. First, it's, it's really okay to make adjustments to the comprehensive plan. Sometimes it's not as comprehensive view as you might think. But overall, it's good. Uh, I've got mixed feelings on this. Um. I think there's some.
It's Jeremy.
Uh, I think there's some pluses. Who's saying that? And and there's some minuses on it, but I, I, I just, I did send to this planning staff who I think are great to regarding neighborhoods first. That was an information and I hope it all was passed on to you. Uh, and that was a group and I, and I really, about their comments about uh short-term uh rentals. Uh, and I love that theme. Uh, I think that's a theme for Bangor. You should live by neighborhoods first. And we have to have a combination of thoughts and feelings about that. But anyways, the first one was commercial short-term r- rentals are artificially inflate rental costs. And maybe, and that's uh secondly, commercial short-term rentals make it impossible for most families to live in their current neighborhoods. Three, illegal short-term rentals attract disruptive visitors and maybe our staff and uh the, this is built into what, what you, you've been doing, but I think just one, one last thing. Uh, what, what impact, one specific thing, what impact does short-term housing rentals have on the more urban areas uh uh in terms of our own understructure, water sewer, et cetera? And also on the residents because in the comprehensive. and also on the residents? Because in the comprehensive plan, there there's the, there's less of an impact on the rural areas and more of an impact in terms of housing. So does this add additional, um, pressure or additional, uh, burdens, et cetera? Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, Sonia Malar on Zoom.
Um, I just wanted to clarify before other people speak that when it beeps twice and the yellow light is showing, that means you have thirty seconds left. And then when it turns red and it keeps beeping, that means you're out of time. So.
Thank you.
Sonia, if you unmute, we should be able to hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Wayne. It's not Sonia. I was at a citizens police academy and just got home. I have two quick questions for you. On this Airbnb, does that mean that the property, if it's now residential, is going to be zoned as commercial? Because it's going to be still residential. Under the residential rules, it's very, it's, there's a wide variety of things you can do for parking. You're going to require one and a half parking places per unit. Is that correct?
Um, well, it depends. We, it's one and a half. I have my parking requirements with me, but go ahead if you do.
One and a half spaces per dwelling unit for apartments.
So it's going to be one and a half per unit, correct? So if you have four units, you've got to have six parking spaces. Right?
Yes.
Okay, under the, under the residential rules, you can have, you're you're a lot, you're in a lot more leeway on where you can put parking spaces. Where under the commercial, you're very restricted. So that means we're going to end up with the asphalt jungles everywhere. And I'm not real happy about that. Now, also, I still, I I talked with the with the tax department some time ago. And they haven't gotten back to me today. I asked the planning board, uh, the planning department over a week ago for some questions and I still haven't heard from them yet. But I'm concerned if this becomes commercial property, according to the tax department, our tax assessor, we have a single family house. But originally was a two family. Therefore, I wanted to change to a single family. And he said, if I change to a single family, the taxes will go up, which is illogical, but that was his opinion. So if these are all change, these don't be, if they become commercial, that means they're going to have a reduced tax and the rest of us are going to pick up the burden. I think you need to check that out before you do anything. That's all I have to say.
Wayne, good talking to you. Thanks for your your comments.
To you, but I'm disappointed in planning. I called them over a week ago, never got a call back. I was in the city manager's office this morning. They were sent an email. I got a call from her. She never returned it. I called tax assessor. He never returned anything. I don't know what you're hiding, but it doesn't look good.
No.
Wait, I did talk to you this morning, so just wanna.
Yeah, we did return the call. Anya did call you this morning. Yeah.
Thank you, Wayne. You would raise your hand next, the woman with the pink shirt, so you're welcome to come on up.
Um, my name is Deborah Garcia. I'm at twenty nine Bates Street in Bangor. And, um, I am generally opposed to short term rentals. Um, specifically, I'm opposed to them in urban resident district one, which is, okay, according to your website, this district is established to enhance, and I'm quoting here, is established to enhance and protect the essential established characteristics of certain traditional low density residential areas of mostly single family detached dwellings. So how does that jive with you guys putting in up to five units in a house? And who knows how many houses in that neighborhood this will happen to? And then what happens to our nice, single family neighborhood? It gets eroded, you know, and it's just not right. And especially you've blanketed the city with the proposal. It's the entire city except for commercial. I mean, you know, shouldn't this be done in, I think one person mentioned, let's try it in a in a section where there already are multifamily dwellings and see how it works. Instead of blanketing the whole town and changing our neighborhoods. Um, I just, you know, I'm very concerned about it and I just wanted you to know that I'm opposed to it and those are the reasons. So.
Thank you. Um, that reminds me of something else that's that's worthwhile to mention. Um, the if you were to read the two thousand nineteen housing report, which is Director Krieg, uh, referenced earlier, which is where the recommendation for this came from. Uh, it also focuses on exactly, uh, the character that you talk about in there. So it doesn't ignore that. Um, and I can't sit here tonight and tell you what the housing report says. It's 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 long. There's a lot in there and I don't remember it all. But that's the place where all of this stuff sort of comes together and people thought about those things and it's it's worth a read. So I'd recommend it to anyone here in this room and it would help you understand this issue a little bit better, I think. Um, that being said, I've got, uh, Sarah Robinson, I believe, on Zoom. You can bring her over and go ahead, Sarah.
Great, thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I'm Sarah Robinson and I live on Broadway. I have a a couple of questions. Um, my first ties in with something that was said earlier. We're gonna try to cap it at one fifty three. If this passes, I think I heard there's somewhere around a hundred and thirty there or a little over a hundred and thirty that are unofficial or illegal ones that are out there. Uh, do we have any provision in this that will, uh, will keep there from being kind of a run? Because I could see people saying, oh, I want to have that just in case. I want to want to do this in the future. So if there there isn't something, I would encourage the the board to think about that piece. Um, doesn't, I don't necessarily need an answer, just that that was a concern when I read through it. Um, I had a question on hosted versus, uh, non-hosted. I thought I understood it until you guys got talking about it. So and so let me use an example. Uh, I live in a single family home, don't have any rooms to rent, don't have a, don't have a secondary dwelling on my property. If I want to live here fifty weeks out of the year, but the two weeks I'm on vacation, I'd like to do Airbnb it. Would that be considered a hosted rental?
Yes.
Okay. So so you have that ability. So I went, so that goes back to what the chairman talked about of I don't actually physically have to be here because I could be on vacation at the lake, uh, for two weeks doing my own Airbnb up there.
Yes, the intent of the ordinance is if it's your primary residence and you're renting a room out for any length of time, if it's under thirty days at a time, then it's a hosted rental.
Okay. And, um, I was just curious because this might put some minds at ease. Uh, do you have, do you know the number of complaints that you and or the police have received from the, um, the current Airbnbs or the current short term rentals that you know are happening around town that even though they're not, you know, they're not documented, et cetera?
I I know that question has been asked at previous meetings and I don't believe there's been any data gathered on that. I I suspect I suspect there are frustrated neighbors who don't always complain. We've seen some emails to that effect, so we understand that there are some folks that are unhappy with existing short term rentals that are near them. Um, but there is no data that I know of that's yet developing, uh, what that what that might be at this point. With this registry, we would then have data on that.
And we can track.
Okay, um, and then so just two quick comments. One, I I want to say that one fifty nine is, or one fifty three seems like a very reasonable number. Because that's one percent. That means there are sixteen thousand living units in Bangor, and I really don't think it will have a huge effect on on fo- lo- long term rentals or the ability to buy property at that one percent level. And just a reminder again that it's not just Airbnb, that th- this is also nurses, doctors, uh, PTs, construction workers, others who who are bringing, um, industry into the into the area that might need that short term rental. So it's it's, it is a mixed use and it's.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, yes, you you and you you're in the back. You don't have your hand raised? Okay, come on up.
Hi, my name is Christie, a new Bangor resident. Um, my fiance is one of the hundred and thirty, uh, illegal hosts. I guess you could call him. Um, I want to just kind of give you some backstory on when we started this. Uh, I don't know if anybody here has owned a rental during COVID, but it was really rough. The cost of oil, the cost of electricity skyrocketed. Our tenants didn't have jobs and could not pay their rent. We, he ended up moving in with me out of town. When we ended up Airbnb being our apartment, his apartment to help offset that. Um, since then, he's, we've currently moved into the apartment buildings. We technically be host in the future. Uh, but we have sunk so much money into that place. The outside looks so much better. The, it has helped us not have to increase rent to the tenants that we do have, the one tenant we have left because it's a three unit. And we live in one of them, so one's an Airbnb, maybe. Um, what I'm saying is it's kind of got its checks and balances there where it's we're not the big guy that's looking to make the big buck or whatever. We're just trying to supplement our income. We have two kids in college, like what were we supposed to do? So for us now, we would love for the regulations. I think it's a great idea. I think it's really good that we're coming together as a city to try to figure this out. Um, I'm not saying you have to necessarily push it past now because clearly there's a lot of a lot of issues and a lot of concerns, but we took our neighbors into account. We went and spoke to them first, like we live in a really nice neighborhood and I don't see the ill effect that having an Airbnb there has done to it at all. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I have, uh, Lindsay Leslie Anderson on Zoom. If you could bring her over.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, yeah, thanks. Um, so I hadn't even planned to talk tonight. I hadn't expected so many people to be opposed to the regulations. Um, but, uh, my name is Leslie Anderson and I live on Highland Ave. And I have also been running an illegal, uh, short term rental, um, uh, while we waited to see, you know, the outcome of this conversation with the city. Um, so I have, uh, a hosted rental. I am renting a room. It's a private room and bathroom in my house. And so there's no opportunity there for me to rent long term. Uh, because it's not an apartment. There's no kitchen. It's it's only set up for people who are coming in for weekends. Sometimes people come for a week to visit family. I've had, um, you know, uh, vets come and work at the emergency vet and brewer, um, all sorts of people come through. Um, I earn maybe five thousand dollars a year. So I'm not, you know, a- as, um, the previous, uh, lady said, I'm supplementing my income and trying to, uh, fix my roof, you know, trying to keep the house presentable, um, trying to contribute to the community. Um, there's not problems with the police because I'm here and everybody knows I'm here. Um, we don't have, you know, I don't have crowds. And frankly, um, next door to me, um, went in a sober living community this year. And they've got seven, eight adults trying to fit into their one and a half parking spaces because it's a residential home. And so that has unilaterally changed the the character of the neighborhood in a way that people coming to spend the weekend at my house with off street parking um, has has not done. Uh, so I'd like there to be consideration for those of us who, um, don't have full on apartments and are living here and just trying to supplement our income. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks for input, Leslie. Good to hear from you. I didn't realize who you were when you first came on. Um, let's see, I have two more ones. One more on Zoom, Sarah Lloyd. I believe it is. Bring her over. Unmute.
Hi, Council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Um, so I am wife to Jeremy Lloyd that you heard from earlier. And I have a little bit of a against the grain, a comment, a question from him. Uh, uh, I, uh, have heard a lot of opposition to this plan. But I would like to hear from, uh, from the council, um, what the projected economic, uh, development that we could expect, um, from from this proposal might be.
Let me take that. Yeah.
I have no idea.
I think, um, this is Ian Krieg, the Director of Community Economic Development for the city. Um, you know, I think that was what we're trying to get to is that balance is that there are people that want to vacation here. Um, and that has become one method that a lot of people want to use for vacation. They want to have either a dwelling unit or they want to just rent a room to save money or they want a whole house if there's a group of people on vacation and and you know, I think the balance is is trying to allow for that because, you know, visitation is, you know, brings, um, you know, economic development to our area. Um, and also, you know, providing, you know, temporary housing for people in the construction industry, uh, people in the medical professions, um, at all levels, you know, when we did hear from people who um, have these rentals that, um, you know, they'll rent to somebody who's going to be head of a a department at the hospital and they're coming here for their interview and, you know, with their family and they want to stay in a house to kind of check out the area. So, I mean, there is value of have of of some allowance to be able to showcase your neighborhoods, um, and to be able to give the visiting public a place to land, you know, uh, you know, a home base of being in Bangor on vacation. But, you know, there's that sort of that balance between allowing for that, seeing that as a positive to the protection of neighborhoods and, you know, and we're hearing those concerns this evening about, you know, what this, what this could do if it's too much for a neighborhood. And again, that's why we chose the one percent was to keep that number at a minimal rate to see how it works.
Thank you, Director Krieg. Uh, thank you, Sarah Lloyd.
Thank you.
Any other questions in the room? Comments? Yes, you go ahead first.
So my name is Suzette. I live in Bangor. My question is the one percent that are non-hosted. Uh, who's to say, what if those end up being all in one particular concentrated area of Bangor, you know, that like? Who knows? They could be spread out. They could just be in one particular area and they're not hosted. So that's kind of put, you know, say it's somebody, if there's one person in the neighborhood that lives in their house alone and then they've got all these non-hosted Airbnbs around them. I mean, is there any kind of?
What we're finding with the monitoring that we've been doing where, um, the where the rentals are right now is, um, they're kind of all over. I mean, there's some that are near, you know, the, um, the waterfront. There are some that are near downtown, but then there's some scattered out in the more rural areas. So, I mean, the market seems to have them be scattered around, um, around the city. So, I mean, that is a risk of, you know, of having the cap and having that cap be citywide is that we may have a situation where that could happen. Um, but it seems like the market, um, has them scattered around the city right now.
And then who who's going to regulate all of this, like to make sure there's enough parking spaces, criminal background checks? Uh, I mean, what about that? How do you know who people are renting to? What, you know, pedophiles, drug traffickers, human traffickers? How do you know?
Right. I mean, there is, there's a whole section on that we were talking about earlier about revoking, um, a permit if there are, if there's illegal activity on a piece of property and that's, you know, again, that value of of the hosted versus non-hosted is, you know, having, you know, some kind of a local, in either case, that there's somebody local that can be contacted if there are any issues on a site. But the city, this this licensure does not track the actual renters. The license goes to the person that is renting. to the person that is renting, not the, I mean, that's renting their, their unit, not the people that are, um, renting from them.
Thank you. And, um, it, it, the woman behind you first. Yes, Anne, Anne Marie.
So it seems to me, I'm Anne Marie Quinn. I live at eleven Chatham Street in Bangor. It seems to me that we are at the most basic level of figuring out if we're going to have a community at all. We have so many problems with housing. I mean, is it true that 20% of the housing is now owned by corporations? In other words, management companies that don't even live in, in the city or have really no connection to it other than a business connection? That's what I read in the Bangor Daily News several days ago. That there's a problem in Maine with houses being built, uh, being bought up by corporations. And therefore individuals find it impossible to find a home, which is a very serious thing. So it seems to me that the worst way to try to build a community is to have it, to have a number, even 1% of, um, non-owner occupied dwellings. I mean, it's, I've lived in other towns that where there have been those and, and they just absolutely break down the community. Because those people that are living there have no connection to the community that they're staying in. So how many short term rentals does Bangor presently have? I'm wondering.
About 136.
Approximately.
Yeah, that's all. 136.
Yeah.
136.
So do we need any non-owner occupied units at all? Do we really need to introduce that component where, for example, an individual could own five, is it five units that they rent out? And the owner of those units wouldn't even live in Bangor at all, could be out of state, could be out of the country. That is not a way to build a community. And I'm just wondering if it's a good idea at this point in time to have any. That's my question. Can we afford to do that when there are practically no houses for sale? And, um, with the housing problems that we have? Just a question. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Next.
I'm Diana Young and live on Allen Court in Bangor. And just a simple question, is there any, um, translation on this beautiful map of what all these initials actually mean?
Yes, we added the zoning acronyms, all that to the website that's listed in the zoning notice. Um, and I'm also happy to email that to you as well. Um, we can.
I love it because computers and me.
Yep, we can provide that, so.
Thank you. Yes, the woman in the back.
Sorry, I wanted to jump up here because my mom's babysitting the kids and she wants to go home. So my name is Ivy Grover and I grew up in town. I went to the University of Maine in Orno and I currently live in Hamden. And I know when we hear Airbnbs, we think of this billion dollar corporation and I just wanted to put a face, um, to that and let, you know, I am not a billion dollar corporation. I'm a mama too. And this job allows me to stay home with my children and it's my livelihood. It makes it so I can do everything that I can. And I've been a Airbnb host, uh, since May of 2021. I've hosted over 1,200 reservations. I have almost a near perfect score. And I have absolutely had the honor of a lifetime of having tourists come and cross off bucket lists. I've taught people how to shell lobsters and go to Acadia. And the best thing is, is they ask me for recommendations and you know where they spend their money? In town. They go to Frank's Bakery and try the raspberry crumble I recommend. And they go to Dice Arts to get that buttery flaky crust that no one can ever say right. And all of these great things. But also it allows us to keep rent low in the same complex because that income compensates for what can be lost. And I'm not ignorant to the fact that everybody's struggling. I mean, everybody, there's no, no matter what you do, you're noticing how much everything costs and I'm no different. Um, the thing is, is I don't just have tourists. I have a woman who's a surgeon at the hospital and she stays every single Monday night so she can go to work on Tuesday. I have people from Chinbro that come. I have such a variety of people that don't want to come for, you know, a year or months and it's nice because I have such great luck and it is regulated, or at least I'm very involved and I've, knock on wood, I've never had a situation where I've had to get the police involved. And the thing is, is it sounds scary when we're like 1%, but when you think of 16,000 units in Bangor and 153 of them might be an Airbnb, you're not going to live in a snow globe surrounded by strangers. And one of the things I want to point out about a short term rental is, um, you might not like your neighbor, but they're going to be gone by the weekend versus if I move in and you hate me, honey, you're stuck with me unless you sell. I mean, that's something I think we need to take into account is the money that it does bring in, not just for me and my bank account, but for the town, the florist, the laundromat, the restaurants, the gas stations, everything like that. Um, I do have a couple of questions and I'm talking quick because mostly I'm nervous, but definitely on a timer here. Um, my concern is while I'm waiting for my license, if I already have an Airbnb, what happens? Because I have people that are planning to come in October to look at our lease from for 2024. So what happens in that waiting period? And if everybody needs a licenser to get approved, how are we going to make sure that we actually have people coming out quick enough to do this? And if I just have one unit, but Susie has five, how are we going to make sure that, you know, Susie gets all five of hers into that 153 cap, but then I don't get mine? Like, do you get one and then you go back to the end of the line? And then my biggest question I'd like to know is, we all know that there's a housing crisis. I mean, unless you live under a rock, we all know. So if we're all of us Airbnb hosts or short term rentals, if we're paying a, um, licensing fee or that sort of thing, where is that money going? Is that just going into the general city budget or is that all going to be allocated to help the housing crisis, that money specifically? If we might be losing our rentals, what's it going to help?
The, the fee structure is set up to just cover the costs of staff time to process the permit. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Because you can't really have a fee, you can't, anytime we do a fee, it has to, um, have some relationship to the number of staff hours it takes to process something.
What about the wait time for the licensing? How does that work, um, with us who already had, you know, bookings lined up and things like that? Because I accept bookings a year out plus.
Yeah, that's why we did the six month grace period to give people that opportunity to come in and, um, you know, we're going to work out the system of, of the cap to get people in so that they can continue. And I mean, with the 136 is the number.
Yeah.
You know, of what's out there right now. And if this were to pass and it's 153, I mean, it's, it's, it's likely that people that are doing it now would be able to continue to do so.
I just didn't know if there was going to be some type of way to have it be one at a time. So like, my one unit, you know, got a chance before Susie got all five under her, you know what I mean? Do we each get one and then get to go to a second round? You know, just share the pie of it.
That detail. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. I've got, uh, Sarah with her hand raised on Zoom. Could we bring her in?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, hi, my name is, uh, Sarah Clark and I live on 26 Parker Street in Bangor. Um, I'm not strictly opposed to short term rentals, but I have seen some issues that non-hosted rentals have caused. And I agree with one of the previous speakers who questioned whether we should be allowing non-hosted rentals at all. As an anecdote, when I was house shopping this year, at least two of the houses I toured in Bangor and including the one that I purchased were being operated at that time as non-hosted rentals, um, specifically Airbnbs that were owned by out of state owners. Um, when I moved into my current house, I was quite shocked actually at how relieved my neighbors were when they found out that my partner and I were permanent residents. Um, having a non-hosted short term rental next door, um, had been so stressful for one of my neighbors that she ended up, um, resorting to posting uh, no trespassing signs along our property line because she was having an issue with trespassers collecting firewood and stuff from her property. Um, and so that was just, that was clearly in effect. I think that was exacerbated by the fact that owner wasn't on site. And I think it is a different environment when it's a hosted rental. Um, I share the concerns that others have raised about the non-hosted rentals as well in terms of, um, who owns them. So I was, I would like to suggest considering either not allowing them or including some sort of additional restriction, either, um, on residency or that it has to be a small business. Um, my concern is about out of state or foreign, um, real estate holding companies, you know, buying these lucrative housing and kind of removing them from the housing stock to be, convert them to short term rentals. And, um, I agree with the potential for the LLC abuse that was brought up earlier. And I appreciate that that has been already something that's on the radar. Um, if this proposal is routed forward, I do have also concern with the language that the previous speaker brought up, and that's a little vague about how you evaluate what units would be under that, that non-hosted 1% cap. For instance, in years going forward, um, if the city receives more applications than are allowed, you know, how would those new to market rentals be evaluated for placement? Would they be based on a waiting list like first come, first serve? You know, merit lottery, uh, I'm just afraid like that. It's a little ambiguous the way it's currently worded. Um, and then we also just talked about this a little bit too, about the funding. Um, I guess I was questioning kind of like, how much is this going to cost the city? Once the regulations go into effect, I'm really happy to see, you know, that there, there'll be regulations on the books. And it sounds like that there will be some monitoring to see if there's any like illegal unregistered Airbnbs or that sort of thing. Um, but, but the previous speaker, we just asked about the, how the fee is structured and it was just going to be covering the permitting. So, um, you know, where is the funding coming from to, to, to support the enforcement efforts that are going to come along with this?
Thank you, Sarah. Anne, do you want to?
Yeah, I think, um, you know, we established a proposed fee structure right now. Um, and, you know, after a year of this, we're going to evaluate that fee to make sure that it really does cover the time it takes to, um, enforce, because enforcement will be, you know, a possible issue that has extra hours to it, or, you know, the amount of time it takes to do inspections. So, you know, that fee may change after we have a year of this, of, you know, of having this in place.
She also asked, I think, was it a first come, first serve on the, um, on the, uh,
It will be.
That's what it is, right? More or less first come, first served.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
And I just want to say, as however this proceeds forward, I do appreciate that this is on your radar and that there will be regulations. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, Jody Goodell on Zoom, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Jody.
Um, given the challenges associated with controlling and monitoring, uh, what will be, uh, a transient versus resident, uh, population, particularly in the non-hosted rentals, has any consideration been given to excluding these short term rentals from, uh, the zones that are already established within, um, a thousand feet of schools and parks? Thank you.
Yeah, there, there aren't any proposed separation requirements.
Thank you, Anne. I, I mean, it's past nine o'clock. Did, I'll give you, yes, sir? Yeah, come on. But I'll, I'll, what's that? And, and you, you want it? Okay. So we'll do two more and then that'll be it. Cause we're after nine o'clock. Go ahead.
You let me know when you're headed. Um, so Jim Broshu, full time Bangor resident. I, I do not own short term rentals right now or, or plan to operate them. Um, I'll be honest, I came here kind of, uh, ready to have a, a certain set of arguments based on private property rights and some of those things. Um, I, I heard some things that concerned me about how we're treating private corporations and and the, the inherent separation that, that has at the federal government level that I think we're kind of, I don't think we're in, in good standing as a city if we go down that route. I don't really think we're ready as, as, as a group to have that discussion. Yeah, to, to even go to that level. What I've heard today is a, a, a planning board that doesn't necessarily understand the regulations as proposed. I've heard a, a community that doesn't understand the impact, doesn't understand that it's, it's, it's already an unregulated industry, right? So it's here. It's at scale based on supply and demand. Everyone's concerned about it being introduced, but it's, it's not a new thing. Right? It's been in our city for years. I don't think that, that the people who participated in this discussion as a whole generally understand what we're, what we're going through. Um, and, and what we're, what is being proposed. And I think that there are economic impact studies for landlords and, and people who rely on this income, um, who are not the large corporations. And I think there are also uh, DNI and, and housing, uh, issues that need to be vetted out further. I, I, I think we need the data behind those things before we start to implement regulations because we don't understand the intended consequences yet. My fear is that the unintended consequences are, are much greater and broader than, than we're really ready to evaluate. So I would just urge the, the council to evaluate that in their, in their, uh, decision-making process. And we may need more time personally.
Thank you, Mr. Broshu.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Sir?
Michael Cushman, uh, my wife and I are, are the second owners of a home over near Bass Park. And it's over a hundred years old. I'm thinking we might be one of the illegal, uh, hosted, but I'm not sure. We've had over 30 some exchange students. I don't know if that's considered hosted or not. Uh, right now we have a young lady living with us who found a job as a teacher in Bangor. We don't charge her anything. She stays there for free. That's how we use our home. Um, but we vet the people who come to us. I'm retired from the Department of Corrections, but I'm still working. Can't afford to really retire. And I know that some of the, uh, guys were very crafty in getting around some of the regulations. So I am concerned that there would be some mechanism in place to help the owners that the people who are coming into the neighborhoods presumably with the separation requirements just referred to. Um, I don't know how long those checks would take or if the city can assist with that. But just throwing that out there. The other concern I have is liability requirements. Um, on the part of the owner. Now, on our particular street, over half the rentals are owned out of state. When something happens with one of those rentals, we don't know who to contact and we don't know how to report it to anybody unless we report it to the city. That's not what we're about. We try to go to the owner rather than the city. Now, I, I saved my questions for last because I didn't want the answers to use up all three minutes. So, a while ago, there was something about, um, uh, boarding houses. And I'm, I'm just thinking at it from, uh, corrections perspective. What's to keep someone who shouldn't be there or who wants a boarding home to go to this place for 30 days? This place for 30 days and basically rotate the population. Essentially, that's a boarding house situation. Short term, but that's what it would be. Um, so are there things in place to help prevent that? To vet the people who come in? You get what I'm asking, I think. So that's, that's our concern. Um, do I wait for an answer or?
Yeah, the, the definition of a boarding house is, is three or more rooms in a building. So, that's why we, we use the one to two is to separate that. You know, to separate those two uses, short term rental in a, in a house versus a boarding house. So, I mean, if somebody, I, it just, it would just seem a little odd to, you know, to do, but when you are given a, a license for a short term rental under this, under, um, this regulation, I, I mean, it just goes to that, to that unit. And if you want to rent it to somebody for two weeks, then they go away and they come back for two weeks. We're, we're not monitoring the people who are renting. We're just monitoring the person that is the renter. And they do have to have, um, a rider on their, um, household insurance.
Right.
That's a requirement.
And that would make sense.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think you can understand my concern, though, about the separation, especially with schools uh with some of the populations I worked with, you prob- well, they're restricted. Um, but the person renting wouldn't have any way of knowing that.
Right.
That's correct.
So.
Yeah.
Thank you for your comment.
Yep.
I just wanted to um clarify too that um the code requires that they would, any host would need to provide their contact information of someone who can be reached twenty-four seven if there's an issue. So that would be addressed.
Is the same true of apartments?
Um, not yet.
We'll work on that. That's next.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate everyone's comments tonight. Um, I'm going to close the uh public comment. Period. It's it's ten after nine, and uh I think give the board members a chance to discuss um and think about this and see where we go from here. Um, Dawn, did you remember Mahar? You seem kind of like you might want to say something.
Uh, I'll I'll give uh kind of my thoughts. I uh I um expect I will be voting uh uh for an octopus, recommending not to ask for some other change uh from where I've been previously. Uh, I do that with the confidence that uh uh registration, licensing, and inspection of long-term rentals will follow forthwith, because I've said this before, my num- the the number one concern I think uh the city has to be responsible for is public safety. And I think the public safety of uh occupants of long-term rental properties is equally as important as occupants of short-term rental. And they they need to be sure. And now there's there's uh, you know, fire alarms and smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms and propane alarms and natural gas alarms. Nobody should be exposed to those risks, whether it's a short-term rental or a long-term rental problem.
Thank you. Good. Thank you. Member Boushe, you had a lot of questions. Do you have any comments?
I I am so impressed by the work that the team has done um on trying to think through all the different discussions, and I know that there's been a lot of um outreach to other um groups and and um, you know, leaders and municipal leaders to try and think through the the pros and cons and how to balance the interests of the landowner versus the interest in uh the of the neighborhood and the integrity of the neighborhood. I I like the cap on the uh single uh, excuse me, on the single family unoccupied. I'm saying that wrong, non-hosted. Uh, I appreciate the one percent there. I think that's a clear threshold. I think that's going to be above what we receive um uh because of the the discrepancy between the one thirty and the one fifty. Um, I'm challenged by the lack of a cap on, so I also agree that having no cap on the um hosted. Um, the hosted makes sense to me that there no cap is needed there if it's an ancillary dwelling or in uh an additional uh room, you know, if somebody has, I think we heard a couple of examples of people who have uh a spare room and they host that. That makes sense to me that that doesn't require a cap because that's not taking the place per se of um affordable housing opportunities. There is a case for um the people who would rent that, uh but presumably those people would rent long-term if they were comfortable with that, but they wouldn't uh, and this is another another viable option for them. I do uh struggle with the multi-units, like the apartment units, basically, where you have an apartment unit hosted or unhosted uh and I suppose it would actually have to be a hosted apartment unit. So if if somebody owns an apartment unit, they could rent out fifty percent up to their five total cap that they're allowed, but it doesn't weigh into the overall one hundred fifty cap. So we could have a hundred fifty uh uh non-hosted houses out there throughout the city, but we could have an additional uh thirty, forty, fifty, whatever the number could be uh presumably much less, but um it would go above that threshold. So we'd be talking one fifty cap and then a little bit extra for the the ones that are happening in people's private homes or on their their ancillary uh dwelling units. In addition to the apartment units that are hosted, but it's just a series of units there. So I think it's worth keeping in mind that we're talking one fifty plus potentially long-term. Ultimately, we're already at one thirty, and it's going to likely stay around that in all honesty. But we need to understand what we're approving. Um, what we're approving here.
Um, just wanted to clarify that it's not just a cap on non-hosted whole-house rentals, it's a cap on non-hosted rentals, period. So that includes non-hosted rentals in an apartment building.
Thank you. I I think I I loved that a little bit when I was explaining. But um, that's how I understand it as well. I do think it's a existing problem, and we need regulation so that people know what to expect, so people can make plans for the future. I empathize with the individual who talked about how they have a year out booked, but there this is crazy creating concern for them because they're not sure what the impact is going to be. And I think we need that stability uh for the individuals who want to rent as well as people who want to know what their neighborhood looks like today and tomorrow uh so that they can make their decisions on which neighborhood they're attracted to and where they decide to uh settle down or rent or or whatnot. So I really do applaud that we're looking for some concrete next steps on getting our hands around this issue that is already in place and is already an existing one. So that's I I've taken up a bit of time there trying to articulate that I'm 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 struggling with some of the language around this. But I appreciate the overall sentiment and where we're going. I feel like getting something in place now is a good beginning to the discussion. And as it evolves, we need to keep an open mind, and I know we will. And I know we'll be able to adjust and tweak it to align with what's really needed as the problems become more obvious. There was an individual who said um that we need to have all the data and all the information before we can make a decision. I don't think all the data or all the information will ever come uh in the short term, and we need stability and clear rules in place now, and I think we keep an open mind about the data, and we understand that it's not a um a finished a finished bit of work. Uh, I'll I'll wrap it up. So I'm I'm on the fence. I'm overall, I'm positive on this. I I just think it's it's going to be a work in progress, even if we approve it.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. Remember Brush?
That's okay.
I don't have much to add. I I I do think that it's, this is a phenomenon that's happening and and that it's necessary to have to to regulate it and to have city control over it. So although there are undesirable aspects of short-term housing, it is here, and it's here to here to stay, and I think it's incumbent on us to come up with a mechanism to to regulate. I I think this is a very good start.
Thank you. Remember Hayes?
I too am a little bit on the fence with this. Um, I feel better that the non-hosted, there's a cap on that because I've witnessed what happens, the joy you have living next to or or um being in proximity to a rental that doesn't have any um supervision, shall we say? So that concerns me. Um, I the hosted, I feel better about if it's a room in someone's house or a uh elderly apart or whatever garage apartment or whatever. But there's still going to be those people that are not responsible homeowners that could still be an issue. So I'm struggling. Um, I do think it's a good plan for a start, and we can broaden the regulations as we go if needed. Um, and as long as we can track those. Um, I I still still a little bit on the fence, but um you know, at at least it's a start, I think, in the right direction. And and it's, I feel better to know that we've had tracking, couldn't do anything about it, but just at least knew what was out there. So um, and I think um to your point, you know, those safety regulations um, you know, are really important, especially if you have a revolving um clientele through the homes, so.
Thank you. Remember Hume?
Yeah, like Dawn, um, I I've this this whole conversation has changed my mind a little bit. Uh, I came in uh because uh with the thought that um a a major thought that um we were infringing on people's owners' rights. Uh, the right to own property and do with what they want to. And I've had it since we've had our first conversations. I've had a number of people call me or stop me in public and make comments about, you know, I I want to take away their rights to homeowner and property owner and all those kinds of things. And I came in a little bit protective of that tonight. Uh, but uh I agree with Jonathan and Don in the sense that, you know, these things are all already out there happening, and there could be dangerous things happening, lack of alarms and lack of of all those kinds of things, and that if we and I want to clarify that hundred and thirty-six that you're talking about are unhosted rentals.
No, it's both.
It's both together.
Yeah, with they um, the current um monitoring that we have does not distinguish between the two.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
But but we could we could be having some very dangerous things going out there. And with Jonathan, I agree that uh you're never going to have, particularly in a short run, all the data that you need to make a decision, but you're never going to get that data, and else you have some kind of regulations to be able to collect the data, to be able to force the data in so that you have it to make decisions. So um where I came in opposed to it, I'm 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 favorable to it now for safety reasons and and because we have to get a handle on what's really happening.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, yeah, my turn. Uh, you know, I we haven't we've talked previously, but not this evening. No one's really brought up that I can recall. Um, and and I generally have had good experiences with short-term rentals in other places I've been to. That's one of the reasons why I'm a little bit positive of it. Um, I also know Bangor has a lot of old housing stock, including my home, which, you know, I I have never done short-term rental, but it's been in the back of my mind somewhere just because it might be something I have to do so I can afford to stay in my home someday, because it's a big old home that costs me a lot of money. And there's a lot of homes like that in Bangor, and I've seen in other cities um where that's one of the ways where they've solved that problem. Folks that couldn't afford a big old home anymore were able to have short-term rentals and make it work for them. And I just so, you know, on top of everything else everyone else has said, and I laugh a little bit at this because if you read anything about short-term rentals, everybody is all over the place on their opinions on this. It's not an easy thing to solve, and cities like New York and San Francisco have tried, and they're still struggling. I think Portland's done a pretty good job, but there it's not perfect down there either. I think Lewiston's struggled. So it's it's a tough thing to do, but I also feel like these gentlemen do that we can't do nothing. I don't believe doing nothing is the wise decision here. I think we need to do something. So I lean towards being in favor of this if if of this amendment. So with that in mind, unless uh board members have anything else to comment on, I'd like to see if we can get to a motion on this. Remember Boushe?
I think I've already taken my three minutes, so I'm sorry. I'd, knowing that we are so far below one fifty uh uh because of the cap and like the way that it doesn't uh this, there's no discrepancy. Is there a reason why we can't pursue? I'm sorry to like split hairs, but like a point seven five or a point fifty. So it is keeping within the existing threshold rather than just saying we can double our uh existing threshold uh comfortably. Um, I don't think we can pass or not pass with that sort of stipulation thrown into the
Right.
the mix. But I wanted to talk about um how viable that would be to uh and if if that would allay some of the concerns that we're talking about here uh within the group, you know, where a lot of us are wa- um on the fence a little bit about it. Is that is that something that anybody else is is thinking would make sense, or am I just overcomplicating it?
What is your proposal?
Rather than a one percent cap that we'd be talking about a fifty uh, a point five percent, geez. Point five percent cap. So uh half of it.
Percent, yeah.
Uh, and that would align more closely to what an estimate might, or maybe a point seven five percent cap. Again, this is me attempting to probably micromanage a process that we should leave up to our our code enforcement and our teams there. So maybe I should uh step back from it, but I'm just wondering if if that would get us closer to uh to being comfortable, because I'm I'm still struggling with um, which is approving it as it as it is today, even though I'm very positive of it.
Member?
I I think my my response to that, when when I when I first saw uh the one percent uh cap on non-hosted rentals, uh non-hosted short-term rentals, my reaction was that's as low as you can get without prohibiting it outright. Uh, to me, one percent is so small that it is inconsequential. It it it's almost as if it still doesn't exist. That's just, you know, kind of kind of my reaction uh to that.
Anyone else have thoughts on that?
I I think it's, I think it's the one percent's a good start. I mean, it really, that that one percent that uh one person can have five units. So you're potentially talking about uh six hundred units. You know, so.
Well, no, but but that would be five permits.
Right.
Yeah.
So that goes that.
If he's got an apartment building, he can have five units. That's five permits.
It's five permits. Yeah.
I would, yeah, I was going off in a different.
It's okay. No, I want to make sure that you understand that.
The cap still is going to be a hundred and fifty-three.
Yeah.
Right.
Which is, and again,
Yeah.
in my world, that's just non-existent.
A motion?
Yeah, I'll I'll make a
Members Hume? Yep.
It it can be pretty simple um that we just uh that uh
It's ought to pass or not to pass, yeah.
Yeah, I make a motion that uh uh the uh proposal to um uh put forth by the Planning Department uh uh to amend the uh uh Land Development Code by creating regulations and allowances for short-term rentals be uh um uh our recommendation to City Council be would be to ought to pass as presented.
Thank you. Cliff's second. Member Brush? Any further comments? Uh, gonna do a roll call vote. Member Brush?
I I vote in favor.
Yes. Member um Maher?
Yes.
Member Hume?
Yes.
Member Hayes?
We can revisit this in a year, right?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're planning on evaluating every year, actually. Yeah.
Okay, I vote yes.
Member Boushe?
I vote yes.
And I vote yes. So this regulation uh is ought to pass to the City Council.
Yep. And the City Council will, this is, this will be on their agenda for their decision this coming Monday.
Thank you.
Third, I think, yeah.
Appreciate all your input. Um, I do have one more item on the agenda for anyone who wants to stay for it to amend the Land Development Appreciate all your input. Um, I do have one more item on the agenda for anyone who wants to stay for it to amend the land development code by creating regulations and allowances for emergency shelters. Um, we have looked at this previously. I think we uh voted it down previously or tabled it because we didn't like it the way it was. Now it's come back to us and um it is currently just in the government institutional service district, as I understand.
Any can go over.
Staff comments?
Yep, um, should I go to the podium?
Yeah.
Okay. So um this has changed substantially since it was brought back last time. Um, the key change is that it's restricted to GNISD greater than a hundred, where it's greater than a hundred feet from a residential zone. Um, so that really restricts the location to just a few areas of the city. Um, primarily around the airport and um a few tiny areas downtown where we have city facilities and things like that. Um, and then it also would add a a lot of other restrictions as far as needing security. Having um a sufficient transportation plan for residents um to make sure they, you know, can use public transit or what have you. Um, and that would also potentially look um dictate the site as well. And um this was, these restrictions were a desire of council. And uh we had also heard that last time we came that people wanted to see these additional restrictions as well on emergency shelters. And so this would allow for um some of our shelters to expand um like the Hope Houses in one of those parcels. Um, and it would allow for new shelters potentially in those few parcels that are there. So that that pretty much sums it up. I don't know if you have any questions on that. Um, the, I'm sorry, I should give background. When this came up originally, the issue was that emergency shelters are defined in the ordinance, but they were never allowed in any zone. So because of that, they're not technically allowed in the city. Um, and so we have shelters existing and they're legally non-conforming, but um there would be issues with expansion or adding any new ones because of that. Um, and the other thing too is there was confusion before from people about um emergency shelters and if that meant it was the same thing as like when you have a natural disaster. So we added language in to clarify that this is not the same thing as that. It's really for unsheltered individuals for overnight stays, so.
Thank you for playing analyst collect. Um, questions? Board members have questions? So, Member Hume?
Yeah, so um, for instance, uh the mansion church, I just, you know, I I admire what they're doing and what they've done over the last year or so, you know, um, the minister there's dedicated his life to helping people out. Is that an emergency shelter?
No, I think they might be a warming shelter. I don't really know what their operations are, but they wouldn't be able to be an emergency shelter under this.
They wouldn't be under this because it's not a hundred
Right.
feet away from a residential unit, but is it currently operating as one?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. No.
We just
Have somebody staying overnight to be an emergency shelter?
Yes, overnight stays.
Right.
Okay, then then it's not, because he he doesn't have overnights.
Right.
Thank you. Any other questions for analyst collect? Um, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Any public comments on on this one? Yes?
If they allowed them to have certain areas like um up above Hope House, um would would the city have to?
Could you introduce yourself again, please?
Diana Young.
Thank you.
Bangor.
Thank you.
Um, would the city then um have to provide trash collection and basic um services like that for for such an area? Because it seems like the trash is one of the worst things that goes on when you have them settling.
Um, well, I I mean, that's a city service that's provided everywhere, so if there's issues with trash collection now, that would be a code violation that could be reported technically. So yes, short answer, yes, they would have to.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anyone on Zoom have a question? You may use the raised hand function. Seeing none, I'm closing this to public comment. And any further deliberation by the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Still been there, Don.
No, I don't. I don't have my uh paperwork with me, so I got nothing of it.
Member Boushe?
Yes, to read that.
I move that we ought to pass uh the amendment for the land development code um with the creation of regulations and allowances for emergency shelters.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Hume. And all in favor? Any opposed? None? This motion passes. Okay, so other business this evening, uh we have meeting minutes for October third, twenty twenty three. Please vote on this only if you are present at the meeting. I think all of us that are here this evening were. Um, any comments, questions, or changes needed on meeting minutes from October third?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve with no comments. I have a motion to approve from Member Hune, a second from Member Mahar. And uh I go with a raise of hands if you approve the minutes. All in favor? That's unanimous. Um, we have nothing else, but I did want to check with solicitor Sevcheck.
Anything commenting on Lancaster Avenue that you would like to say, or do you want to skip that this evening?
Um, I would just say that the uh order just came down, that uh we are in the process of reviewing and analyzing it. And that's where we are right now. So there's nothing for the board to talk about right now. Except that the uh the uh the permit was vacated with and and the court remanded the matter to back to the planning board for further proceedings. And uh staff will be uh recommending how how it proceed after we have a chance to discuss the the order.
Can you confirm? Was there a stop work order?
Yes, there has been a stop work order on the uh on the project because the the superior court uh specifically vacated the planning board's permit, so they no longer have a permit to proceed with the work. Uh, there is uh erosion control and and soil stabilization that will need to uh take place uh at the site. So it it may not be that there's nothing going on, uh but but the project itself, the building is, there's been a stop work order put on it.
Good, thank you. Just wanted to make sure we got everyone up to speed on that. Any other issues this evening before we wrap it up? It's been a long evening. I appreciate it, everyone. Um, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Let me give you a little data, the trash can. Oh, yeah, so I called these uh so